I would like to make a motion to appoint Susan LaRue as the district board clerk for the 2023-2024 school year.
Second.
Okay, so that was John and Kurt Lynn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion is carried. Thank you. Okay. Susan, did you raise your right hand? Please raise your right hand with Pete after me.
Aye.
Susan LaRue.
Susan LaRue.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of district board clerk.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of district board clerk.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability. Will be elected board members, please rise for you. Please raise your right hand with Pete after me. Aye.
Aye. John Dorsey.
Aye. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board member.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office of board member.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Alright. I would like a motion to nominate an elected member as board president.
So moved.
So moved. Sharon and Dory. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to nominate an elected member as board vice president.
Aye.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
I would like a motion to nominate an elected member as board president.
So moved.
So moved. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried.
I would like a motion to approve the Warwick Valley Central School District's special education plan for 2023-2024 as it appears on the agenda.
Dory.
Second. And Tom. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve that the impartial hearing officers for the 2023-2024 school year be selected from the New York State Education Department's list of impartial hearing officers per the Commission's regulations.
So moved.
Lynn.
Second.
And Tom. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to nominate an elected board member as delegate to the New York State School Board Association for the 2023-2024 school year.
So moved.
Okay, so that's Bill with Sharon and Lynn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to nominate an elected board member as delegate to the New York State School Board Association for the 2023-2024 school year.
So moved.
Sharon. With Dory and Lynn with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to nominate an elected board member as an alternate to the Orange County School Board Association for the 2023-2024 school year.
So moved.
Sharon. With Dory and Lynn with the second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to nominate an elected board member as a delegate to the New York State School Board Association for the 2023-2024 school year.
I nominate Dory Masefield.
Lynn with Dory. The second. Tom. Excellent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to nominate an elected board member as a delegate to the New York State School Board Association for the 2023-2024 school year.
I nominate Dory Masefield.
Lynn with Dory. The second. Tom. Excellent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to nominate an elected board member as a delegate to the New York State School Board Association for the 2023-2024 school year.
I nominate Dory Masefield.
Lynn with Dory. The second. Tom. Excellent. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve the Warwick Valley Central School District's special education plan for 2023-2024 as it appears on the agenda.
Dory.
Second. And Bill. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve the Warwick Valley Central School District's special education plan for 2023-2024 as it appears on the agenda.
So moved.
Lynn with Dan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve that the impartial hearing officers for the 2023-2024 school year be selected from the New York State Education Department's list of impartial hearing officers per the Commission's regulations.
So moved.
Lynn.
Second.
And Tom. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve that the 2023-2024 Committee on Special Education as it appears on the agenda.
So moved.
Lynn with Sharon. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve that the impartial hearing officers for the 2023-2024 school year be selected from the New York State Education Department's list of impartial hearing officers per the Commission's regulations.
So moved.
Lynn.
Second.
And Tom. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve that the impartial hearing officers for the 2023-2024 school year be selected from the New York State Education Department's list of impartial hearing officers per the Commission's regulations.
So moved.
Lynn.
Second.
And Tom. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to nominate an elected board member as a delegate to the New York State School Board Association for the 2023-2024 school year.
So moved.
Okay, moving on to the regular meeting. I'll call that a meeting. I would like a motion to approve the minutes for the June 1st, 2023 regular meeting and the June 15th, 2023 special meeting at Board of Education.
Second.
And Dory and John. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. This time we'll turn it over to Dr. Beach for the reports from the administration.
Okay. Well, good evening. Is this on? No one? Good evening, everyone. Thank you. At this point, the administrative reports will focus on, first, the battery energy storage system. And I have about four pages of notes that I'll be sharing with the board and community this evening, followed by our engineer, Jack Eisenbach, here this evening as well to field some questions that the Board of Education may have. I was anticipating Convergence being here this evening, and they have elected not to attend the meeting. We notified them that today at about 11:30 to take, and that invitation was extended last week. We were surprised to learn that they would not be attending, and their feelings were that it was great to charge to do so. So, there's a lot of folks to thank. I'll try to think of all of them. Some of them are certainly here this evening in terms of what has occurred over the past meeting. Chief Raiders here from the Warwick Police. I certainly want to thank the Warwick Police, the Warwick Fire Department, supervisor Sweden has his leadership has been just incredible. Mayor Newhart internally, and Harrington, our engineer, Jack Eisenbach, who just represented this from the county. And the response has been very supportive and impressive during this difficult time. So, in Warwick, just a brief introduction. In Warwick, two newly installed battery energy storage systems, ESSs, experienced major failures last week. One incident took place at the ESSs on school district property located on County Route One, while the other occurred on private property on Church Street. These failures occurred during the commissioning process of the installations. Privatizing the ESSs located at County Route One is the district's primary focus in much of our discussion this evening, obviously. However, evaluating both sites is prudent in order to provide a comprehensive assessment. The development of the battery storage units in Warwick can be traced back to 2019 when Orange Rocket Utilities entered into a contract with Convergence Energy. The objective was to identify suitable sites to enhance Warwick's electric system. Given historical challenges of backup energy redundancy in the area, while Orange opted for battery storage as an ideal solution instead of constructing new transformers, these battery storage systems are designed to improve grid reliability, prevent blackouts in store, and discharge energy from the grid during peak demand. The County Route One site provides power for two substations, while the Church Street station serves one substation. Convergence West Warwick LLC, a subsidiary of Convergence Energy and Power, owns and operates the systems after purchasing them from Powell, a battery storage system manufacturer. On June 27, 2023, a fire broke out in one of Convergence Energy's battery storage units. Site is adjacent to the Warwick Valley Central School District's transportation garage on County Route One. The fire caused heavy smoke and burning plastics needing to evacuate the vision of the district office and the state high school. The fire was contained within the facility's fence line and actively monitored by the Warwick Fire Department and the Orange County Hazards Materials Hazmat Response Team. As a precaution, all schools, outdoor venues, and offices were initially closed from June 27th of 2022. Throughout the incident, hazmat measurements indicated that air quality remained within normal parameters at multiple points surrounding the scene. However, it was advised to maintain distance, keep windows closed, and the district promptly turned off all air handling units. When a problem occurred at the site, the district engineer, Jack Eisenbach, who's here this evening, presented present at the scene, hired an independent consultant on behalf of the district named Dr. Richard Lynch, who is a CIA-certified industrial hygienist. Dr. Lynch inspected the site, examining smoke and fire. To ensure safety, the district personnel relocated all buses in the district parking lot to away from the affected area. Dr. Lynch advised devising sampling plans to test various surfaces, including school buses, transportation, and facility offices. The samples were promptly sent to a laboratory for analysis. The report along with the sample results were forwarded to the district on Friday, June 30th, 2023. All the samples came back at levels below detectable limits, including samples taken from inside buses. The closure was extended to June 29th and the 30th as we graded those results, while periodic updates were provided via our website. The district reopened Monday on July 3rd upon receiving confirmation from Hazmat and Dr. Lynch that no concerns regarding air quality or residue were found after those examinations. Power was disconnected and turned off at both sites, effectively disconnecting them from the grid. The site is secured and access restricted by the Fire Department, the Warwick Police Department, and Powell, the battery company. The exact cause of the issue cannot be determined conclusively until a thorough assessment is conducted. The fire at the County Route One site continued to burn for a duration of two days, and on Friday, the overheated batteries returned to ambient temperature. To prevent water damage, the other newly installed battery system on the site was securely covered. The district retained an independent consultant, Vertex Engineering, to review the events and conditions. Vertex had two representatives on site on Monday, July 3rd, 2023, to review the conditions and plans. Brett Saunders from the district's engineering firm that Jack is here representing this evening was also on site inspecting the present conditions. They will issue a memo about their observations and status moving forward. These issues occurred specifically with Powell's system, the Centipede Battery Energy Storage Platform. Convergence, the purchaser of these systems from Powell, has not deployed this particular model elsewhere. The Centipede systems are the only ones experiencing problems on Convergence's projects in Warwick. At this time, Powell has yet to deploy Centipede modules elsewhere, to my knowledge. The stats of the Centipede modules at the district site will remain unchanged until a decision is reached on how to proceed. The modules damaged in the incident will be evaluated and removed from the site. During the inspection conducted by the district's engineer, a thorough analysis of auxiliary power was carried out, and the engineer provided proper documentation to facilitate the activation of power from the grid, especially for the air conditioning systems and the containers, and to access the computers. The data stored on the computers were instrumental in the collaborative review and analysis process. This assessment will help identify the root cause of the incident and develop preventive measures for the future. It is critical to note that the batteries themselves will not be recharged or operated until approved by law. At this time, only the air conditioning fire detection system and computers will be powered with loss pattern. The district engineer visited the site, estimated and not more comprehensive inspection, the district will further provide further updates and additional reports are available. The County Route One site provides electricity during periods of high demand for two substations. The unaffected portion of the storage system area consists, again, the unaffected portion, consists of 853-foot containers that house batteries. These containers have a solid roof preventing water prevention. The compromised area, on the other hand, consists of two fully modular Centipede strings. Each string contains seven pre-integrated segments, including batteries, thermal management equipment, and safety systems. The Centipede battery storage system is designed in separate modules to protect batteries from water exposure. Both systems are equipped with smoke heat detectors and fire suppression systems. During a fire incident, one of the Centipede strings failed all active safety measures. However, the system designed effectively mitigated the risk of fire in neighboring stats exposed to fire. A little bit about, so that is about location next to the bus garage, behind the bus garage, rather, in County Route One. A little bit about 28 Church Street. Again, that's on land that is owned by a private residence, and I don't have certainly as much knowledge of that site, but this is what I do know, it's been on public record. On Monday evening, June 26, 2023, at the 28 Church Street site, a smoke heat detector was triggered, prompting a Powell representative to inspect both sites. No issues were observed, and the detector was reset without further response. Another alarm sounded on Thursday afternoon, June 30th, but no fires detected, and investigations are ongoing. As a precaution, the affected module at the Church Street location has been completely disconnected and disassembled. Additionally, starting on July 3rd, the battery modules from the impact unit were removed from the site. Powell was responsible for it. Was pastating the necessary precautions to safety package, removed the batteries from one module at the Church Street site. These incidents occurred concurrently with severe weather conditions, including heavy rains, lightning, high winds. Powell is currently determining the root cause of the incidents. They will actively involve both Convergence and the community in the review process. Convergence has also enlisted an independent consultant to do an assessment. His name is Paul Rogers, to evaluate the situation. And that's not to be confused with the independent consultant at the district, that's not Vertex Engineering Firm. A little bit about approval process and how they differ from the two sites. The energy, the battery energy storage system located in County Route One, specifically on school district property, was reviewed by the district engineering firm. The design was approved by Orange Rocket Utilities and the New York State Education Department. Given the nature of the school district's work, it falls under the New York State Education Department scrutiny, which includes a thorough examination of the design. Given the nature of the school district, it falls under the New York State Education Department scrutiny, which includes a thorough examination of the design. The New York State Education Department engineers reviewed the unit's design and approved it. This process ensured compliance with all relevant codes and regulations. This approval process included factors such as distance from the school, the bus garage, and flood planning considerations. When approving the location and design of Convergence's projects, it was required to provide sufficient space between the battery storage units and adjacent areas. This was to ensure that this type of event did not threaten adjacent areas. The project in question was reviewed during the district facility meetings and Board of Education meetings all open to the public. The Board of Education meetings provide an opportunity for the public to comment on both agenda and non-agenda items at each regular gathering. All contracts and agreements related to this project underwent the normal approval processes during Board of Education meetings over the last three years. The agreements have been archived in the district's website, the Fordocs to be specific, and were all made available for public review prior to their approval. A little bit about the timeline in terms of those approvals. On May 18, 2020, the district approved a 10-year lease agreement with Convergence Energy Solutions, which includes two renewal terms, 10 years each. The first renewal term for 10 years is subject to the reasonable approval of the New York State Commissioner of Education. The second renewal term of 10 years is contingent upon approval from the district's voters and the reasonable approval of the Commissioner of Education. So that goes back to May 18. Excuse me, yeah, May 18, 2020. On June 20th, 2020, the Board of Education grants approval for the district to act as the lead agency for the project. The district was responsible for completing all necessary applications, forms, notices, and correspondence related to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEER. The district clerk has been directed to distribute and mail all required notices to the relevant agencies. On May 5th, 2022, the Board of Education approved the First Amendment to the lease agreement. This amendment expanded the lease area to approximately 25,000 square feet, which is a little bit over a half acre. This includes two parcels, one measurement around 12,000 square feet, and the other around 13,000 square feet. The parcels total a little over a half acre plan from the original 31 and a half acre site located here where we are, 225 West Street. The lease has a potential duration of 30 years with a final minimum annual rents for the half acre. The first 10 years, 100,000 minimum annual tax, non-tax revenue annually. For the next 10 years, assuming approval, 120,000 dollars annual non-tax revenue. And for the final 10 years, assuming approval, 140,000 minimum annual non-tax revenue. Therefore, the potential non-tax revenue of the 30-year lease period is about $3.6 million of non-tax revenue. As part of the New York State Education Department approval process, the Warwick Fire Department was asked to review the project. The Warwick Fire Department specified the need for a fire hydrant near the storage system entrance. This step was required by the Village of Warwick. Convergence Energy Solutions agreed to reimburse the district for the fire hydrant relocation cost. The New York State Education Department directs us to get that type of approval and involvement with the local fire department. On October 6th, 2022, the Board of Education approved the utility easement and right-of-way. The Village site, so that's, that, those are the important dates in terms of the site here. And I'll move over to the Village site, and just a little bit that I know, I'm concerned about them speak for themselves, but the Village site situated at 28 Church Street is private property. This project underway, a review by the local planning board. This, this plan also involved engineer approval, not our engineer, different engineer, a presentation to their planning board, and the completion of the State Environmental Quality Review as well. It was also involved a hearing and examination by the planning board members, and the planning board approved the site application. So in conclusion, the recent failures of the battery energy storage system in Warwick during the commissioning process prompted thorough investigations. These incidents resulted in a fire at County Route One site, which is at Lawrence and Church Street location. As a result, both sites have disconnected and disassembled the affected units, and the independent consultants had engaged to assess the situation. It is pertinent to note that both sites were equipped with the battery energy storage systems, including the Centipede Battery Energy Storage Platform manufactured by Powell, which failed at both sites. However, Convergence Energy has not encountered, what we're told, similar problems with other battery storage systems, non-Centipede. So moved.
Modules at the district site will remain unchanged until a decision is reached on how to proceed. The modules damaged in the incident will be evaluated and removed from the site. During the inspection conducted by the district's engineer, a thorough analysis of auxiliary power was carried out. The engineer provided proper documentation to facilitate the activation of power from the grid, especially for the air conditioning systems and the containers and to access the computers. The data storage computers were instrumental in the collaborative review and analysis process. This assessment will help identify the root cause of the incident and develop preventive measures for the future. It is critical to note that the batteries themselves will not be recharged or operated until approved by OML. At this time, only the air conditioning power detection system and computers will be powered with loss pattern. The district engineer visited the site, estimated and not more comprehensive inspection, the district will further provide further updates and additional reports are available. The County Route One site provides electricity during periods of high demand for two substations. The unaffected portion of the storage system area consists, again, the unaffected portion, consists of eight fifty-three foot containers that house batteries. These containers have a solid roof preventing water prevention. The compromised area, on the other hand, consists of two fully modular Centipede strings. Each string contains seven pre-integrated segments, including batteries, thermal management equipment, and safety systems. The Centipede battery storage system is designed in separate modules to protect batteries from water exposure. Both systems are equipped with smoke heat detectors and fire suppression systems. During a fire incident, one of the Centipede strings failed all active safety measures. However, the system design effectively mitigated the risk of fire in neighboring stats exposed to the fire. A little bit about, so that is about the location next to the bus garage, behind the bus garage rather, in County Route One. A little bit about Twenty-Eight Church Street. Again, that's on land that is owned by a private residence, and I don't have certainly as much knowledge of that site, but this is what I do know, it's been on public record. On Monday evening, June twenty-sixth, two thousand twenty-three, at the Twenty-Eight Church Street site, a smoke heat detector was triggered, prompting a town representative to inspect both sites. No issues were observed and the detector was reset without further response. Another alarm sounded on Thursday afternoon, two p.m., but no fires detected, and investigations are ongoing. As a precaution, the affected module at the Church Street location has been completely disconnected and disassembled. Additionally, starting on July third, the battery modules from the impact unit were removed from the site. Powell, the sponsor party, was pastating the necessary precautions to safety package or move the batteries from one modules at the Church Street site. These incidents occurred concurrently with severe weather conditions, including heavy rains, lightning, high winds. Powell is currently determining the root cause of the incidents. They will actively involve both Convergent and the community in the review process. Convergent has also enlisted an independent consultant to do an assessment, his name is Paul Rogers, to evaluate the situation. And that's not to be confused with the independent consultant at District, that's not the BURTEX Engineering Firm. A little bit about the approval process and how they differ from the two sites. The energy, the battery energy storage system located in County Route One, specifically on school district property, was reviewed by the district engineering firm. The design was approved by Orange Rockland Utilities and the New York State Education Department nicely. Given the nature of the school district's work, it falls under the New York State Education Department scrutiny, which includes a thorough examination of the design. Given the nature of the school district, it falls under the New York State Education Department scrutiny, which includes a thorough examination of the design. The New York State Education Department engineers reviewed the unit's design and approved it. This process ensured compliance with all relevant codes and regulations. This approval process included factors such as distance from the school, the bus garage, and flood planning considerations. When approving the location and design of Convergent's projects, it was required to provide sufficient space between the battery storage units and adjacent areas. This was to ensure that this type of event did not threaten adjacent areas. The project in question was reviewed during the district facility meetings and Board of Education meetings, all open to the public. The Board of Education meetings provide an opportunity for the public to comment on both agenda and non-agenda items at each regular gathering. All contracts and agreements related to this project underwent the normal approval processes during the Board of Education meetings over the last three years. The agreements have been archived in the district's website, on the Ford docs to be specific, and were all made available for public review prior to their approval. A little bit about the timeline in terms of those approvals. On May eighteen, two thousand twenty, the district approved a ten-year lease agreement with Convergent Energy Solutions, which includes two renewal terms, ten years each. The first renewal term for ten years is subject to the reasonable approval of the New York State Commissioner of Education. The second renewal term of ten years is contingent upon approval from the district's voters and the reasonable approval of the Commissioner of Education. So that goes back to May eighteen, excuse me, yeah, May eighteen, two thousand twenty. On June twentieth, two thousand twenty, the Board of Education grants approval for the district to act as the lead agency for the project. The district was responsible for completing all necessary applications, forms, notices, and correspondence related to the State Environmental Quality Review Act, SEER. The district, the district clerk has been directed to distribute and mail all required notices to the relevant agencies. On May fifth, two thousand twenty-two, the Board of Education approved the first amendment to the lease agreement. This amendment expanded the lease area to approximately twenty-five thousand square feet, which is a little bit over a half acre. This includes two parcels, one measurement around twelve thousand square feet, the other around thirteen thousand square feet. The parcels total a little over a half acre plan from the original thirty-one and a half acre site located here where we are, Two Twenty-Five West Street. The lease has a potential duration of thirty years with a final minimum annual rents for the half acre. The first ten years, one hundred thousand minimum annual tax, non-tax revenue annually. For the next ten years, assuming approval, one hundred twenty thousand dollars annual non-tax revenue. And for the final ten years, assuming approval, one hundred forty thousand minimum annual non-tax revenue. Therefore, the potential non-tax revenue of the thirty-year lease period is about three point six million dollars of non-tax revenue. As part of the New York State Education Department approval process, the Warwick Fire Department was asked to review the project. The Warwick Fire Department specified the need for a fire hydrant near the storage system entrance. This step was required by the Village of Warwick. Convergent Energy Solutions agreed to reimburse the district for the fire hydrant relocation cost. The New York State Education Department directs us to get those, that type of approval and involvement with the local fire department. On October sixth, two thousand twenty-two, the Board of Education approved the utility easement and right-of-way. The Village Site, so that's, that, that, those are the important dates in terms of the site here. And I'll move over to the Village Site, and just a little bit that I know, I'm concerned about them speak for themselves, but the Village Site situated at Twenty-Eight Church Street is private property. This project underwent a review by the local planning board. This, this plan also involved engineer approval, not our engineer, different engineer, a presentation to their planning board, and the completion of the state environmental quality review as well. It was also involved a hearing and examination by the planning board members, and the planning board approved the site application. So in conclusion, the recent failures of the battery energy storage system in Warwick during the commissioning process has prompted thorough investigations. These incidents resulted in a fire at County Route One site, which alerted to Church Street location. As a result, both sites have disconnected and disassembled the affected units, and the independent consultants had engaged to assess the situation. It is pertinent to note that both sites were equipped with the battery, battery energy storage systems, including the Centipede battery energy storage platform manufacturer Powell, which failed at both sites. However, Convergent Energy has not encountered, what we're told, similar problems with other battery, battery storage systems, non-Centipede deployed, such as some that are deployed at County Route One. The district is equally awaiting the completion of the root cause analysis and the development of a plan to address the situation moving forward. The, as I mentioned when we started the, I started speaking, we were hopeful tonight that representatives from Convergent, perhaps even happened, but Convergent would be here this evening, and I learned a little after eleven o'clock today that they are no longer accepting our invitation. I expressed my strong disappointment and felt that it would have been very appropriate for them to be here this evening, and I understand they are waiting for the root cause analysis so they could, so that they can answer many questions with specificity and accuracy. However, I let them know that I felt that they were missing opportunity in terms of establishing, trying to reestablish some trust. I said that many of us in our careers have any situations and leadership roles where we didn't have all the solutions, and however, we needed to stand up and speak up and share what we do now, and share our willingness to make sure we come up with a resolution that's in the best interest of all parties. And they did forward me a written statement to read. I'll read that now, okay? And then, my, Jack, it'll be your opportunity to share what you'd like to share from your expertise. I'm sure the board will have questions for you, and again, we thank you for being here this evening. To the Warwick Valley Central School District, members of the Board of Education, Super Tended, Dr. Leach, and parents and community members, in letterhead says Convergent, and also reads Powell, both from the top of the letter. We thank you for the opportunity to address the recent event at the battery storage site. First and foremost, Convergent, Powell, de-heteroglycemic impact and disruption that's caused to the community. Our companies have been working diligently to understand what causes the situation and to address it promptly and responsibly. Our teams have been on-site working closely with local authorities, emergency services, and relevant stakeholders to mitigate the impact on your community. We hope our absence does not create the impression that we are not sincerely interested in transparency and open communication, and we are committed to attend an in-person meeting in August when the investigation into these events is advanced, when we can provide a more substantive update. In the meantime, we remain committed to working collaboratively with the school district and its engineers, continuing to welcome their active participation in the process as, has been since the start. We want to thank the members of the school community, district staff, the community for participating and responding to this event. Want to particularly appreciate leadership of Super Tended, Dr. Leach, and Super Tended Business, Mr. Holmes, Director of Facility, and Mr. Harrington, as well as the Fire Chief, Chief Raider, the Orange Police Department, Orange County, and Orange Community Response Systems, for their credible match of responsiveness and competence to ensure at one scene. We appreciate that you have a lot of questions about this event, and we are doing our best to gather the prof, the, and process information to provide you with those answers. Right now, we need more time to advance that work so we can reasonably answer your questions. Here is information we are currently able to share with you. The battery storage systems on-site at the school and at a second location in the Warwick community are designed to enhance Orange Rockland's utility infrastructure, improve the power base reliability for that community, the community from the disparity of lack of. The batteries store energy from the grid when there is a surplus and discharge, get back onto the grid when it is needed most. The system is a resource for Orange Rockland to help the community reliably meet the increasing demand of electricity in the center. Systems like this one are used safely in communities nationwide. This system has the potential to increase reliability for approximately seven thousand five hundred Orange and Rockland customers in this region. These battery storage systems not only support the reliability of electricity, they can also reduce electricity costs for residents of this community as they provide an alternative to large-scale system upgrades. This site was not a warehouse for batteries, which is how it was described in some of the news reports made last week. Convergent leases the site from the Warwick Valley Central School District, providing additional revenue for the school district. Convergent purchased the impacted battery storage systems from their manufacturer, Coleman, P.O.W.I., they got pronounced wrong, Powell. On the evening of June twenty-sixth, we observed Powell at the Church Street location. On June twenty-seven, it was a fire. A fire at the location behind the bus garage on County Route One A. The safest way and industry best practice to respond to a fire involving a lithium ion battery storage system is to monitor it and perform an active intervention, such as using water or chemicals. This event evolved, involved Powell's newest model of battery storage systems, which are referred to as a Centipede. The event coincided with a series of weather events, including heavy rains, lightning, and high winds. Powell is in the early stage of determining the root cause of the incident and will be actively engaging with both Convergent, the school district, and the broader community as the, as they review progresses. The location and design of Convergent's projects provides sufficient space between the battery storage units and adjacent areas to ensure that this type of event does not threaten the adjacent areas. Because of these practices, the fire did not spread beyond the impacted units located within the fence line at any point. During this incident at the school district location, the Orange County Hazmat Response Team's independent measurements of the air quality associated with this incident were considered by Hazmat to be safe and at normal levels. Both project locations, both project locations are discontinued from Powell and are expected to remain so until they can be safely activated. In the meantime, they will be closely monitored. We will work closely with local agencies and the Warwick Valley Central School District and its engineers to provide updated information and answers to some of the questions you may have to deal with. We wanted to know that we are committed to finding out what happens so that we can answer the questions that you have. From more than a decade, Convergent has had a track record of safe operations. Convergent has never experienced an event like this before, and our company's goal is to continue to serve as a valued part of the community. Powell has been a manufacturer, has been manufacturing and installing utility-scale energy storage systems for nearly a decade without any reported thermal events of this magnitude. Thank you for your patience as we look into what happened here so we can determine a safe and community-centric way forward, respectfully, the Convergent Executive Committee and Powell. So, thank you for, I don't like to read the quotes, but thank you for providing me with an opportunity, as I thought it was important to be as comprehensive as, as we can be, but we also wait the root cause analysis, but we also wait the analysis from our independent party that we have hired, as well as who, Convergent hired, we, we hear through the industry, it's highly respected. Jackson, speaking highly respected, thank you for being here this evening, and pass the light to you, so it's, you just make a show of a little green light.
It's on, there's a few things. One, first, all the containers, all the batteries, battery containers at the site, there's two different types. We have two strings of Centipede batteries and eight fifty-three foot containers that also are batteries. They're all made by Powell. Just, the ones in the fifty-three foot containers are a technology they've had for many years, and they haven't had a problem with it. The Centipede is a new type of technology, and this is the first place they've used it. And the idea behind it is you have to keep water off the batteries. And apparently, in this case, both, both sites, one of the batteries developed a leak, which created, resulted in the problems that occurred. Number two, so it's clear what Dr. Leach mentioned, battery systems like this are to replace what New York State calls peaker power plants. During winter, energy use is about even most of the day. During this weather, everyone's got their air conditioning on. So between, let's say, twelve and five, the electric load is much heavier. So, all over New York State, at least downstate, there are these peaker power plants that are gas-fired. And the state of New York wants to go to green batteries, and they're putting battery systems in so that they're charged at night, which is when there's not a lot of load, and they discharge when there's a huge flow during the day. I put some of these in, we have one in ours, Lee, we have put them in elsewhere, not with different brands, not had an issue. This was a failure in either design or manufacturer of the containers that housed the modules. So you understand the batteries inside these were made by another corporation, and all the batteries are the same, so it's not the batteries, it's the house that holds the batteries. The Centipede system didn't work the way it's supposed to. I also want to clarify one other thing that Dr. Leach mentioned in, from the Convergent letter, when they talked about the Hazmat units and normal levels of contamination, there's an action level where you have to start doing things, and nothing exceeded it. And not only that, and he mentioned it, I want to reiterate, Dr. Lynch took several samples, air samples and samples on surfaces in the transportation garage, the facility building, the buses that were parked near it, especially the five buses that picked up kids on Monday for the handicap, for summer school. He took samples in middle school. The, the Hazmat unit was running air samples not only by the bus garage, but also by the middle school. So, none of those air samples and none of the scent swipe, the dust samples or swipe samples taken on surfaces in the buildings found any level of contamination, not just above an action level, nothing, they were all below technical. So, we were very fortunate. I also want to compliment the district staff that when the problem arose, they were very quick to turn off all the air and equipment in all the buildings, so we weren't dragging air into the buildings, which also helped. A little bit of questions?
Okay, if anybody has any questions, please.
I, I was simple, just a clarification, you said it was a little, sorry. So, so you referred to a leak in the battery. I, I just, in my understanding, the, the leak was in the
The housing, not the battery.
The housing, not the battery.
Correct.
So, so the, the challenge was the introduction of moisture into the compartment that holds the batteries?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I just wanted to be sure I understood that, thank you.
Yes, the, the batteries are the same in all the containers. This is the case where it's supposed to keep the water out, and it was a problem. That's what, that's what the speculation is at this point, there'll be a lot of time spent doing a lot more detailed analysis.
And I just want to reiterate, Jack, you just used the term speculation. We are waiting for the root cause analysis to be complete. I understand that they use data to do that, as well as inspection, and perhaps we'll learn more, correct?
Correct. We'll learn a lot more when we can turn on the auxiliary power, they can then turn on the computers to find out what happened with each of the modules in all the different portions of the system. The Centipede has its own computer, but in addition, there's a master computer of the site, so we can look at everything in great detail. And we've already worked out with Convergent that when their consultants are looking at the data, we want our consultants, independent consultants, also to look at the data, so we know we're getting the best answers we can.
I have another quick question, just like, also clarification. So when you're saying the Centipede system, you're just referring to the whole casing unit that covers the batteries?
No, what you have, the, the eight units that are the older style, you have a fifty-three foot like shipping container, and inside of that you have batteries. Okay, so that's much different. Then you have the Centipede, which is a module about four foot by eight foot by eight foot, and inside the module is actually eight hundred and forty cells. But the idea is the containment is supposed to keep moisture out, and it has its own air conditioning system, and it has its own fire detection, fire suppression system in each module. And the reason they have developed this, and if you sometime when you get, can get in there, you will see that the pads are eight to ten feet longer than the numbers Centipede modules. So if power, as the state commands that you only use electric per housing, you only use electric for heat, you only use electric, and the amount of electric being used goes up, you could add a module on the end rather than having to add a whole fifty-three foot container. And that's why they developed this module. There was an issue that we won't know for a while exactly what caused it.
Jack, really, I wish they were here to answer this, but they're not. In their statement that Dr. Leach wrote, read, they stated that best practice is not to put water or chemicals or batteries in fire, but they also indicated that fire suppression systems they had in place failed. What type of fire suppression should they use, water and chemicals or non-respective?
It's an oxygen deprivation system, it's supposed to eat the oxygen in the container. And that's what it was set up to do. If you look at the fifty-three foot containers, each module in the container has a fire suppression system, and then the entire container has a separate larger fire suppression system, so it's got redundancy that you don't have the smaller modules.
But it, it failed because there was a leak, so?
Yes, but again, there's a lot of speculation. I'd rather not, the chemical reactions of water with an lithium, there is prostate gathering, we really don't want to get into that right now.
Good evening, Jack, thanks for being here. Just a quick question. The notification system, how do we know that these systems weren't fired?
There's heat and smoke detectors in each module, and set off the fire protection, and was set off from the alarm that was audible, but it also notified the fire department. So, fire department was notified through the fire detection system, even in our, in our case, and in the Church Street site. When it first, when it first happened to go off, it was, someone looked at it, couldn't find any source, and then they ended up turning off the, resetting the system, it went off, and then it didn't, didn't call off until, again, until Tuesday morning, and Tuesday morning is when it really went off and caught fire.
So, so there's a central system that connects to the fire pump, or is it just connecting to operators that Convergent has, and they notify the fire pump?
I would, I think it notifies the fire department, I want to check on that before I answer that, but I do know the fire department is notified very quickly. The difficulty for the fire department is the little they can do. You look at it, when these fires happen, as was stated in the letter, you basically have to just let it burn itself out, because you can't get near it, and they don't. Even the chemicals, you can use fire, you can use oxygen deprivation, that will eventually do it, but you would have to make sure it stays with no oxygen for a long enough time to cool. And you have to realize it took about two days for the battery system to get to room temperature after it was out. So it takes a while for that mass to cool down.
Now, does Powell believe that they're going to be able to utilize the same systems going forward?
Can't answer that.
Can't answer that.
The board asked me, there's going to be a lot of discussion of that between now and months from now.
Yeah, I also, like Tom said, I would prefer Convergent to be here and answer some of the questions, because, I mean, all these batteries are lithium ion.
of the questions because, I mean, all these batteries are lithium ion in nature and there's been a lot of fires throughout the country with battery systems.
Most of the fires around the country have been with vehicles and e-bikes, but there's been fires with these as well. That's, I can't say, but we didn't have, they never had a problem with the 53-foot containers because you have the extra redundancy and you have a roof on top of it, so it kept the walk around. In this case, we will see what the answers are. Again, we, the district has retained Vertex and Narin, we had Dr. Lee checking to make sure it was safe to be in the buildings and then we will continue to work as a team to protect this.
I can add, Mr. Vannas, that again, the root cause analysis is incomplete, I don't, you know, play me an expert in terms of determining what happened here, but I did send a very strong message to the legal counsel of Conversion that we're not too enthusiastic about keeping the Centipede. So remember, as folks know, there's two sites, one's 13,000 square feet and one is 12,000. And, you know, the Centipedes were on one of those, what do we call it, Site Two, there's a big Site One and Site Two, the Centipedes were on Site Two and was left as one strand, a whole string of strings. And I made it very clear that regardless of the solution that they come up with, there's certainly a lot of reservation that I am sure of, because I thought I'd be speaking on the board's behalf, that there's strong reservation, we would not be interested in investing too much in that technology.
Thank you for bringing that, Dr. Lee. I personally don't feel comfortable with the Centipede system. I mean, you have two sites, like Jack said, that are launched in one area and off that, that's not a twenty-eight. So...
And I understand the Church Street location is all Centipede, right, Jack? It's all Centipede, there's four strings of seven Centipedes at that site. They were fortunate, the one that was problematic was the N module. So when it started overheating, they disconnected and pulled away from the other modules, so it didn't deal with any other module. In our case, it was the second module.
It's with some reluctance that I talk about the 28 Church Street site because I don't have the same knowledge that I have as happened here, however, I do think it would be irresponsible not to touch upon it based on the common health issues of the challenges and the problems that these have been raised.
Well, I'll say this, you know, anytime that, you know, Conversion wants to come back, even if it's not for a board meeting, we'll schedule a special board meeting and I'm sure most of us will be available to make ourselves available to talk and ask questions and make sure that, you know, they are as transparent to us as possible. Yeah, I think their absence here tonight says more than, you know, just not answering, not having to answer those questions. So anytime they want to come back, they're more than welcome, I'm sure, we can make ourselves available. I guess the one question I have, Jack, that people have said to me is what other sites were looked at and why here? Were we centrally located to, for this type of project?
They need power at some stations. The location here is very close to two substations and one at Church Street needs a third substation. Warwick has four substations. The only one that wasn't connected to one of the battery units was the one that's near Kings. And they chose it because, one, it's pretty isolated from buildings, but more importantly, it was proximate to two of the substations and that's what they wanted.
And we saw, and we had understanding that there was a liability that it could have even been across the street on our property.
So in other words, there would have been projects like this somewhere in the Centipede School and everything?
Correct. There would have, there had to be because again, electric use is going up and the government is pushing electric use to increase. So there has to be a mechanism to provide the power during the high demand season, which is May through end of September when the air conditioning is midday at night. Also, as we go more into electric cars, electric buses, electric stoves, everything, the electric use is going to go up. And the peak is that one o'clock to five o'clock time period, these batteries are charged at night when they have low demand and they discharge when they have high demand. And it's designed to make sure you have good reliability throughout the day.
If you had a follow-up?
Yeah, I had, I had just a follow-up, you know, as we're moving forward with this, you know, obviously you're a bit instrumental in making sure that, you know, everything is done properly, but as, you know, this moves on and if this isn't not upgraded to the point where we're not dealing with, you know, Centipede batteries, then, you know, what's the recourse with State Education Department to make sure that, you know, with all safety measures, this doesn't happen again? I know you've said, and I'm also from a notifications standpoint, we were lucky that people were here at the building, even though the facility is shutting down with the air handles and air vents. What is being done so that we can ensure that if something were to happen off hours, that everything is fine?
One of the things that we're doing right now, we're in the process of replacing the building management system, which controls all the equipment in all the buildings. And I've talked with the company installing that, which is a capital project, it's in the process of being installed. And we're going to connect, whenever these batteries go online, we want to connect it into the BMS system, so if anything shows up, show a problem, it will automatically, whatever time of day, it will automatically shut down everything in the district. So that all their end equipment, air intakes could be shut off automatically without, I don't care if it's Sunday at two in the morning, the idea is if a smoke detector goes off, that battery system, the C plus will automatically shut all the air and move it down.
And recourse if they're existing on the Centipede?
Not any of the legal issues that I don't want to get into, but I've read the lease. They're going to have a hard time, but I would say that we have to just wait to see what they're going to come up with. They know that we don't want, it's been told to them in Dr. Lee, me, our independent consultant in Vertex, we've all told them that we really need to find, bring in two containers and get rid of this thing.
Well, it doesn't, you know, two systems out, they're both to be, that they all are out, that's not conclusion, I guess.
Correct. We all know, that's something we have to work on and we all have to work as a team to make sure we get a product that everyone here gets as comfortable living at the end of the day, that it's going to be safe and alive.
Related to that, the Centipede systems have been disengaged from power, they're shut down. What's the plan to remove those faulty systems, if there is one? I understand that we're waiting to get the data from the computer after we've hooked up the auxiliary power to those units, but in terms of the, they're dormant now, correct?
Correct.
Have they been physically removed or they're still on site?
They're still on site.
And is the, and we understand what the plan might be in terms of removing them?
No.
Okay, thank you. Thanks.
But it's important to note that both project locations are disconnected from power and will remain so, for certainly a protracted period of time and will be several discussions and review before, I'm sure and very confident, before either will be online and I can speak specifically about the one.
So there's no power to the facility, there's no danger?
Well, the battery, I'll let Jack answer, but the batteries have been de-energized, correct?
The batteries are being de-energized, they have 24-hour supervision of battery system, even though they're de-energized. There's been, Conversion for power has had its own watching store.
Yeah.
At both sites, because they want to make sure that it's motion. They have covered the Centipede modules, the heavy tars, so no matter how heavy the rain, it can't get water inside. And they've covered all the battery, all the modules over Church Street heavy tars. You know, when I read from Powell and some of the studies they did, what happened here when there was a complete failure of the fire suppression system and the module itself, the last safeguard is really the design behind it, where, the engineering design behind it, where you're going to have a string, that's unfortunately burned out, those seven modules are old. However, it's designed to be adjacent areas, the other seven or the areas around it will catch on fire, right, Jack? Correct.
That's what happened. And that's what exactly would happen. Not a blowing endorsement for me, but nevertheless, it is the final safeguard that is built in place and it is what happened.
How often is a system that is functioning properly actually physically checked on? Like how often does somebody actually go to a site that is not having any problems to physically check on?
Typically, I would say once a week. I mean, we don't need, again, if the monitoring equipment is set up, when the thing went off, it notified their computers and, I forget what city it's in, but it notified them of the problem. And again, we're talking about insisting that we connect to our BMS system, which would also notify the district that there's a problem with one of those modules, anything going forward. As if BMS goes off, can also have any sequence that notifies district personnel.
Now, Jack, at the Hill site, they had a decompression right there, right? They had a hazardous material coming in to remove these charred batteries.
Correct.
Right, so 94 drums.
Eighty-four drums, but now they have the whole pack of, yeah.
So locked and really safe, but they don't have a plan like that at our site here?
They're not at the point where they have made that determination because the thing was that that site, batteries were still heating and so they had to dismantle it so that it didn't, so they took all the cells out of the Centipede unit and put them in drums and then spaced them out so they would not overheat. That's why they took so many drums for one unit. In our case, we have seven units that basically inside is junk, so it will be taken care of, we don't know. And no one's going to open that up until we have the proper team on site to really get in there, which is going to happen pretty soon. We've worked as hazardous for 40 years and I guarantee you that we're going to want to look at it when they open that up and make sure we handle it on our property very carefully. And we're also testing every, again, as much as I think something is okay, we're testing everything, okay? And that's, that's one of the things, I'm not even 90% sure of what the answer is. I don't like 100% not knowing, so we've already worked with the school to make sure it's testing.
Jack, I think, you know, frankly, if I'm wrong, but the approval process for a project like this, for a school district, in comparison to a local village, for example, a town, the screwy that project would have the nearest education department, talk to me a little about the difference, if you would.
Well, for anything on a school property, we've prepared a set of plans, they gave us some documents to review, the documents that showed the process. The problem here is not necessarily the process or the design, the problem is that the module will fail at water type, I think, and that's what I'm getting so far. And it's supposed to be water type, we won't have it to continue to answer until all the testing is finished. In this case, once it goes to the State Education Department, State Education Department insisted that we talk with the fire department, you get them to sign off, and the fire department insisted that we have a fire hedging close enough, not for them to put out the fire in the batteries, but you're surrounded by trees. So if there was a problem, they wanted water close enough so they could put out fires nearby and green, or if a bus caught fire or something, they wanted to make sure they have water. And the fire chief worked with us to determine where it would be heightened. And we had to extend a four-inch water line, there are heightens on the street where the water line is too small for the fire trucks. So we had to extend the water line down so we could put in the proper side of the water line and a proper mitigation that the fire trucks would have to. And that's what we did and Conversion paid for that. And we worked, and then Village asked, didn't want us to fire chief, and so they approved the heighten and recognized that we were putting batteries at that time. The resolution from the town council, I'm not sure, the board, Village Board references batteries where they approved the heighten.
And we'll talk about the seaker floodplain?
All right, well, besides the issue of heighten, we had to do a current quality review, that's reviewed by the state, we had to prepare floodplain map as you're near the floodplain, and the State Education Department had to review floodplain and they signed off where we were because we were not in it, we were at the fringe, I didn't know the floodplain itself. So we had to go through all that, then the engineering union had to go through the documents and approve the plans. So after we got done approving the plans, then the engineering union had the facilities planning, the State Education Department also reviewed the documents and they stopped going.
So if the root cause analysis, if it determines that the modules were defective, if it draws that conclusion at both sites, the last, which is obviously bad luck and the first time it's been deployed, I think ever, is here in the town of Warwick, this unit, it does make you wonder if by chance it's defective, exactly what type of quality control is in place. The last safeguard is the actual design, right?
Oh, the housing.
Oh, the housing and engineering, because exactly what happened is really...
Absolutely.
And he's spending the next two months figuring it out. And I want to reiterate, you know, it's our, whether it's our conversations with Conversion, Powell or Orange Rockland, and Orange Rockland had it, but of course, as well as their, the customer and their expertise, we have made it abundantly clear, this is to remain disconnected and until further notice.
Correct.
And that's even for the modules on Site One that are functioning.
And that, now, they could have functioned if they wanted to turn Site One on, but they are all disengaged, they're all disengaged and they're all de-energized.
The 53, the container?
Everything is de-energized on our property.
And in terms of, the district is certainly incurring expensive costs, yes, whether it's the testing or legal fees, the list goes on, it's my understanding that that is going to be built back to Conversions.
I can definitely say that we will build a conversion. There's a lot of costs that we've incurred, there's a lot of costs that, you have all the testing that Dr. Lynch did, and the consultant in Vertex, you have all of our time, there'll be more testing, more sleep, so we're going to be looking at that very carefully, but all of the bills, we're keeping, it seems pretty good about keeping track of the numbers in the district and we're keeping track of it and we need to be back to our conversion.
You know, and Jack, while I'm extremely disappointed that Conversion is here to answer a lot of these questions and that you, you're in the hot...
answer a lot of these questions and that you, you're in the hot seat, we appreciate that. You know, yeah, no pun intended. We appreciate, you know, we certainly appreciate you, you know, you being here. I will say on their behalf, that when we reached out and we looked into hiring our independent third-party expert to come in and to do an assessment and guide us, the person they hired was many of our first choice. And we went out and found another quality firm. So there are two highly, two private, independent firms that are researching this and doing this assessment. And that's, that's reassured. He's actually pretty great. Paul Rogers is looking at the system. I'm not sure if it's Powell or who hired another firm. We hired our firm, Vertex. So there's actually three firms. The second firm that Powell hired is more going to analyze the reaction of chemicals and stuff like that as much. So there's a lot of people watching this right now. I guarantee, and I will tell you that Tuesday, Paul and I had someone in the department looking at everything. Yeah. So. And when our independent person was here doing the testing, he, Dr. Lynch, he also did air quality, that was similar to our medical hazmats. And I believe the hazmat is going to be available that day soon, if it isn't already, for folks to peruse and get familiar with. Yeah. Yeah, everything is public information. Everything we did is public information.
Yeah, it's just, it's a whole idea, this whole thing. I think it's my main challenge is the safety, right? The safety concern of our students, safety concern of the employees, of anybody that's visiting in the area. Because as you stated earlier, that most of the fires and people are with the same bar, e-bikes, value cells from different appliances in their homes. We do have, because of the climate act of, yes, in 2019, the state of New York, right? There's a major push to have this value storage because for you to go to, so, as a renewable energy, it's just not feasible, right? The cheap power is four or five hours a day, right? To garner the energy to produce electric to the grid, you're going to need that we store the systems throughout the state. So this is not, this is not a one-off here, right? This is going to be something that we're going to have to embrace, and we choose to embrace it at a lot of different locations. And having said that, my concern is that, you know, all manufacturers are not created equal. And maybe we want to really dig into how and see if they're doing the testing on their products that are required because there has been fires in Victoria, Australia, Monterey, California, there was two major fires in Arizona, one where the unit actually exploded, right? Because sometimes the combustible gases within those storage facilities build up, you're introducing oxygen, fire captain, the nosb, opened the door to the facility, blew the backside of the sheet, right? You know, scares a lot of internal injuries. So the location may have to be revisited, in my opinion, right?
As we move forward and we get this data, all of that has to be evaluated to make sure that it is safe. We have advantage, no matter what happens on the site. And we lost seven modules in the Centipede system. We had some very low levels of volatile organic compounds in the air, but none of the levels were elevated to the point where anyone had to wear respirators. It was very, very good. And both the hazmat unit and how, and Dr. Lynch were measuring outside and inside and to make sure it's safe. I can tell you very simply, my direction is, I've got to be 100% sure that what we end up as the final product is not going to have a situation like this again. And that we have something that we feel comfortable with communicating that it is safe. That's been taken quite a while. I mean, it took four days, but the, I mean, literally, the site is still closed, anyone is not allowed by Powell. They did let our people in on Monday, good, but Powell didn't. Even Conversion can't get in the site.
Right, just so everybody's aware, Conversion is the broker, right? Conversion is not the manufacturer. Powell's the manufacturer. So Conversion could have used as a manufacturer.
Yeah, the, for this product. Conversion is contracted, we have a contract. They bought the Centipede and the containers from Powell, the paper, and batteries inside them, made by a company called EPE. So there's three of those parties in there. And then you get to put in the fire suppression system, put in the fire alarm system, all of that stuff. But the charge for everyone on the team is when this, before this gets turned on, we have to be 100% sure that we're not going to have a similar situation again. And no matter what, with all the issues, there was no one injured at this site. And, you know, yes, it did create other issues, but we didn't have an issue with the school that contaminated, we had a queen of, or any of that.
I guess, so the question, you know, for us is kind of, what's our timeline in terms of expectations around updates and what will be here, like where are we going here was our next?
Yeah, so there are meetings daily, sometimes, sometimes two times a day, non-attended or they haven't been attending. Often, we'll see our colleagues in the back, the police department, the supervisor, et cetera, we're due to, daily meetings. And I'm disappointed in what I can say with confidence is, you know, we're in the top of the first inning in terms of next steps. And no, no one, I believe no one around this table certainly, and I don't know anyone who feels comfortable moving too quickly, as we don't even have a root cause analysis completed, or any assessment done at this time, nor do we even have Conversion or Powell here at the table to even have the conversation with us. So it's, I'm hopeful of the next school board meeting, we'll have more information that Powell and Conversion have said will be in that meeting. Well, in that letter they wrote, they talked about in, you know, in August. So we're talking about a month, month and a half before you're going to have any start answers. I think that's the, off the list. Anyone else? So, moving on a little bit, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Jack. Megan is going to take your spot on the hot chair now, hot seat, and she's going to give us an update regarding summer school, because believe it or not, school's still in session. And, you know, when I was a kid, John, I didn't have a chance to go to summer school. If I do it over again, I would have wanted to go.
When I was in school, we tried not to.
When I was in school, we tried not to go to summer school. Now we love summer school. Why? Well, we've got over 200 students attending our summer program. Historically, we've always offered summer school, but it's on a very small scale, where we had students who may have been receiving special education services at a district. And now we are offering a robust summer school program, district-wide, for students in grades one through 12. It's over at Park Avenue Elementary School. We have about 200 students. That's where I'm going to stop, Megan. I don't want to steal all your, your thunder there, but maybe you could give us, I know a kid go up Wednesday, you tell us the reason.
If you had the upper school, if you're in the upper school, you know, so like Dr. Lee said, our summer school, the first 12th year schedule, over at Park Avenue Elementary School, so there are approximately 200 students, which is an increased pressure, which is very exciting to have. So our kids are going to be working hard through August 15th. Our program offers unique, positive academic learning, engaging, enrichment activities to ensure a well-rounded summer experience. We understand the importance of maintaining and furthering academic skills during the summer break, so we provide stimulating opportunities for kids, like the jars and mechanics. Our experienced, dedicated teachers incorporate interactive teaching activities, including hands-on experiments, group discussion, and outdoor play to make learning enjoyable and effective. I think it's, no, our summer program is entirely staffed by district teachers and employees, and that's something that we're exceptional about. So the administrators, as well, we will fit over there and students get off the bus and they're like, oh, this summer, this summer's here! You know, they're genuinely excited to see their teachers.
Yeah, Mr. Powell's wanted to volunteer, he started the first day. We know he's an option.
Absolutely.
We have to give him a lesson before he starts, though, in a certain way, hold the book and start as easy as he does.
As the furniture is lowered, so just for that, that was an adjustment for myself. So the curriculum is designed to align the grade level standards, but also to cater for individual student need. Social engagement is a huge part of this program, and we prioritize creating and supporting our individual students, or they need about strong social connections and interpersonal skills. Daily physical education is another component of our summer program that we're exceptionally proud of. So it promotes physical health, mental wellness, social skills, and the development of life and healthy habits. So we encourage our students to be physically active, we empower them to be healthy and balanced lives, and that also fosters positive social interaction, which can pass to their own academic success. So our P E activities are designed for someone to involve teamwork, cooperation, and sportsmanship. They learn valuable lessons such as communication, collaboration, leadership, and understanding of course, working together, for a common goal, perspective, class against opponents, handling successes and failures graciously, which we can also teach. These skills transfer.
Is that one of our favorite teams, the summer sub again?
One of that, so graciously, it is a lot. These skills transfer to various aspects of life, including academics, social interactions, and future careers. Our middle school students are actively engaged in civics, mostly focused on U S history, government, and science flexing, which includes corporate project-based learning. Our high school students are provided the opportunity to participate in credit for honorary courses to fulfill the D R C graduation requirements, and E L R in algebra, global and U S history, P E faculty environment. Eligible students can also take the D R C exams in any of the subjects that are offered. A unique component of our summer school program, Dr. Leach, is our in-district, the S E S Q R classes, which is exclusively for special education students. So S E S Q R or E S Y is a program specifically designed for students with disabilities who require ongoing support services beyond the traditional school year. So it's a continuation of the services that they receive during the school year, but is offered during the summer to ensure that students have access to consistent, individualized education. It recognizes that some students need additional time to maintain their progress and to prevent homelessness or, you know, extended school break like summer. This is the second year allowed for this program in the district. Previous year's students had to attend a regionalized state motion, so that's a particular area of pride for senior board, is that we, not only keep our kids, but some of our neighboring districts who are able to offer a program, send their students to safety, which we're built on. Our summer program can also consist of enrichment courses, and students can select and register for based on areas of interest. So the session topics include cupcakes can be decorated and chocolate-covered treats.
Can we?
These are the interesting topic types, handboards academy, team time, praising with Lego science, cooking, baking, crafting, slime, or not particularly, art therapy and fun, and small entochation cupcakes and create. So it's a very busy summer here in the district, so we believe in a well-balanced academic approach in addition to enrichment opportunities, or aiding to engage students in a class with positive creativity and create a environment where every student can thrive and walk these dream goals for their summer vacation.
Thanks, Megan. I think what I'm hearing a lot of is the pedagogy and the program is different, very different in some respects than the regular nine-month, ten-month school year. So that, I think, is good, you know, in terms of intervention, have a different experience and different opportunities, really, so see if we can close some gaps and away summer lardymalls.
Absolutely. I think the power of having our teachers as the educators, so they know what's covered in each of the grade levels, and they can highlight some of those power standards for those areas of, you know, grade establishment.
And they still see develop principles in the hallway, right?
All the time.
You got to make sure.
It feels a little bit of popularity contest. I was like, who is he paying for those time pods? Not until he's playing them.
All right. All right. I'm sure it's not, I'm sure it's not just written.
So Megan, I have to relate to your story of a 13-year-old boy in our district, they flunked all his classes, and so his grandfather stepped up in the summer and worked with him and passed it on, so they passed all the classes. So the boy completed it cool. So I can just play my video games during the year, and then grandpa and I can test the courses in the summer.
Excellent.
That's not awful. Video game. Good? Okay. Well, thank you, Dr. Leach, Jack, if you can still hear. Megan, appreciate all the information and all the questions. There, everybody happy? I'm going to open it up to comments on agenda items on. No comments on agenda items, good, no follow-up. Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. I would like a motion to accept, approve, or authorize the consent agenda items as they appear on the agenda. So, the story and the bill. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is cap. Okay. Open it up to reports from the Board of Education, advocacy of local fair funding, Oxbow, and other, several times, so there's not a lot of, I don't agree. I think we'll need to call Oxbow. Okay, perfect. Audit? The external auditors are reporting the district the week of June 21st, and the audit committee will be scheduled when we receive their report. Well, facilities committee is going to be scheduled with our engineers to have that root cause analysis, fire, at the battery storage facility, and the next steps. Policy?
We're, we're going to be receiving our, our new audit for 2023, 2024 in late July, and obviously we'll be discussing that, hoping to be meeting, and then we'll, like, we'll be at Congress.
Excellent, thank you. Helping us? About anything on coalition for the summit of others?
Coalition is basically focused in this month, I'm supporting the Leach Department, who will be doing their August 1st, uh, night, uh, program.
Thank you. Did you have anything for help for us?
Not really helping, you're just summer time, we need to gather some students to more than just focus.
Excellent. Okay, excellent.
Can we go back to Oxbow for one second? Megan and I, this is the Oxbow annual meeting this year, and I just wanted to say that our student was one of the speakers, and he did a phenomenal job growing Oswald, really shine, and he represented our district so well, and he talked to them like he did when he came to our board meeting, how all of his project has led up to him achieving the civic readiness, seal of civic readiness. So it was a great night. Oxbow always does a nice job, and it's really, really, we were proud of our student. Yeah. I just think.
Yeah, we got that feedback from our Chinese school board, so we're glad to chat. So, great to be here. Excellent. Okay, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Leach, the recommendation to the superintendent of the school.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the personnel and CSE agendas.
So?
That's John, Garsha, and Dory Mace, Bill. That's John, Garsha, and Dory Macefield. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? The motion is carried.
Okay, moving on to new business. I would like a motion to offer our, the assistant superintendent for business to increase the budget as it appears on the agenda.
Some.
Sharon. Dan. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. And this is a nomination from Sanfordville P T A for playground. I would like a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four retainer agreement with Shaw, Pearlson, May, and Lambert, L L P, as it appears on the agenda.
Some.
Second.
Bob and Dory. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four retainer agreement with the honeyball law firm, P L L C, as it appears on the agenda.
Some.
Sharon.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four consultant agreement with M J B Communications as it appears on the agenda.
Some.
Second. Lynn and Tom. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school physician consultant agreement with little psychiatrists as it appears on the agenda.
Some.
Second. Sharon, Rob. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four professional services agreement with Crystal Run Healthcare Physicians, L L P, as it appears on the agenda. Dory?
Second.
And Tom? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I'd like a motion to approve the revisions to policy four two one one for original central school districts organizational chart as it appears on the agenda.
Some.
Okay, we're going to go with John and Lynn. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I'd like a motion to approve the Future Farmers of America F F A field trips for twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four and to approve the F F A mom and seniors as they appear on the agenda. Dory? Lynn?
Yeah.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. I would like a motion to nominate John Repin as the area nine director of the New York State School Boards Association, N B A.
Some.
Dory?
Second.
And Lynn? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Commentary from residents. Any resident wishing to make a comment at this time on any, uh, not that get that in? You don't shake that. Any, um, board member have any old business that you'd like to discuss? So that's it. I would like a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Some.
Second. Dory. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion is carried. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night, get home soon.